Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by roll call. See that all council members are present with the exception of Councilwoman Kukavas, who's been excused this evening. Like to welcome those of you who are here with us tonight from the public as well as our city staff. We'd like to welcome those who may be watching on City 56 or some other communication devices this evening. We'd like to begin by an invocation. I've asked Councilmember Kelly if he'd lead us in invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Crittenden. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
Father in heaven, I do thank you for the very privilege that we have together in this place to conduct the business of the city. I'd ask that you give the council special wisdom and help the staff as they give direction and assist us. I do thank you for each person who's come out tonight, and again, those that are watching. Please be with our service personnel at home and abroad. Bring them back safe to us. That is our plea. And thank you so much for the moisture recently delivered to this mountain. And just like I am always so selfish, I want more. So I'm asking you to continue to bless us as you always have, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly and Councilmember Crittenden. Appreciate that. It was great to have rain. You know, we appreciate the blessings that we have in this mountain. Our first item tonight is a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's not scheduled on this agenda may do so at this time. Know that you need to keep your comments to three minutes, and staff cannot respond directly. We do have one person who's filled out so far. Steve Beardsley, the president of the White Mountain Meals on Wheels. Turn the time to you at this time. Just state your name and your address, please.
Steve Beardsley, 5330 Red Squirrel Lane, Lakeside, Arizona. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. On behalf of the staff of the Cholo Senior Center, I wish to extend an invitation to yourselves and all the citizens of Cholo to come join us for lunch. We serve lunch five days a week from 11:30 to 12:30 at a very reasonable cost of $7, which includes beverage and dessert and salad. And our menu is evolving as we speak. The Senior Center, as you know, is open to all the citizens in Rio, the county, or the city. And we urge you to come and see the new stuff going on, the activities that go on all week long. And you're not age restricted. Everybody that's young at heart is urged to come down.
Do we need to make reservations?
Reservations are certainly appreciated because of the cost of food. We don't like to throw anything away. We like to know who our guests will be so we can have ample meals available. We never turn anybody away, but you might not get the freshest hamburger if you're the last one on the block. So please make reservations. You can find our telephone number in the phone book, but just in case, I'll add that while I'm here. It is, of course, 928-532-0656. And I would also like to advise you of our new website. If you haven't had an opportunity to go online and find it, it's white mountain meals on wheels dot com, 501(c)(3). We list our monthly menus, our weekly activities, and we throw in a few fun pictures of our guests. So please come down and see us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else on call to the public? Seeing nobody moved, I'll close call to the public and come back to special events. Tonight we have a presentation by Arizona Public Service regarding the Next Generation Renewable Energy Ballot Initiative. We have Janet Dean here tonight, and Jason Hatch, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come speak to you tonight and present on a topic that's very important to this region and to our state. As you mentioned, joining me tonight, we have Jason Hatch, who is the Construction and Maintenance Supervisor for APS's Snowflake Dock. And also Chuck Moore from Nav Apache Electric Cooperative is here tonight also to support this presentation. Tonight, what I want to talk with you a little bit about, and I'll just take a few minutes, but I want to talk to you about the Next Gen Renewable Energy Ballot Initiative, which is called the Clean Energy for a Healthy Arizona Ballot Initiative. It's currently gathering signatures in an effort to be, to make the November ballot. This initiative's being funded by a gentleman named Tom Steyer, who is a California billionaire and hedge fund manager, who is seeking to bring this initiative to Arizona and to other states, similar initiatives to other states. It seeks an amendment to the Arizona State Constitution that will require some Arizona utilities obtain 50% of their energy generation from renewable sources by 2030, which is only 12 short years away. I want to emphasize, before we get into some specifics, that this initiative isn't about renewable or clean energy, and it's not about a healthier Arizona. And how do we know that? We know that because it's not going to affect all utilities. The state's second-largest utility is not going to have to meet the mandate. But other utilities, APS, TEP, the electric co-ops, they're going to have to meet this mandate. We know it's not about clean or renewable energy because it leaves out Palo Verde Nuclear Plant, which is the largest source of clean energy in the state, leaving no carbon, producing no carbon emissions. And we know this because it's, we know it's not about a healthier Arizona because it doesn't address vehicle emissions, which is the biggest source of pollution in the valley. If passed, here's what the initiative will do. It's going to circumvent Arizona's current structure for energy policy and regulating utilities, which has provided Arizona residents with some, with some of the safest, most reliable, and cost-effective energy in the country for more than 100 years. It's, as I mentioned, going to enshrine in our constitution a mandate that can dramatically affect consumers, electric consumers in this state. And it's a mandate that can't be changed without another costly ballot initiative or three-quarter vote of the legislature. It's going to leave Arizona residents with some severe consequences because it's enshrining certain technology, and it doesn't leave us, as a state, the flexibility to adapt as energy changes and grows. It's going to require Arizona utilities to take a hard look at the plants they've got. The coal plants are nuclear plant. We predict that these will be closing sooner than, for the coal, for the coal plants sooner than they're targeted to close. And it's going to really bring into question Palo Verde's future. We expect if this passes, Palo Verde could close as early as the mid 2020s. That's going to cost taxpayer tens of millions of dollars in lost tax revenue. It's going to force Arizona residents to pay hundreds of millions of dollars in new infrastructure because as these baseload generation plants are no longer cost-effective, they, we're going to have to build new plants that will actually let us adapt to being able to provide energy when the sun goes down or the wind's not blowing. And it's going to weaken Arizona's economic competitiveness because it's going to double residential, commercial, and industrial electric rates by 2030 when this is fully implemented. The Arizona State University School of Business, Sidemen Research Institute, did an independent study on this, and they found that Arizona would lose 3.5 billion in state tax revenues if this mandate is successful. 2.3 billion of that's in local tax revenue, and that includes 1.7 billion dollars in property taxes. The other thing that it's going to do is it's going to greatly push up costs to our schools. That's one of the things we took a hard look at. And with the doubling of electric rates, that amounts to almost $100,000 more a year for your average grade school in their electric costs, and nearly $200,000 more a year for your average high school. This, this is bad for Arizona. That's what we want to leave you with. This is bad for Arizona. It's bad for our state. It's bad for electric consumers, and it's all being funded by an out-of-state group. And we don't need an out-of-state group here studying energy policy in Arizona. With that, Chuck, do you have any comments you'd like to make? No? No? Questions? We're happy to answer questions. Our goal tonight is to educate you and let you know our perspective, why we believe this is bad for the state.
Appreciate that, those comments there. Is there any questions that anybody has? Council, Councilmember Kelly.
The only question I got for you is why you beat around the bush so much. Just come right out and tell us how you feel about it, okay?
It's very bad, Councilman Kelly. Thank you for asking.
Any of the comments, questions? All right. Well, thank you. We appreciate what you do, and thank you for APS. We appreciate what you do for our communities.
Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight. And if you have other questions, feel free to call.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Next item we have is a consent calendar. Is there any items that need to be polled or discussed separately? I'll review those. We have a consideration of a resolution approving submitting application 2018 build, formally a tiger grant for Scott Ranch Bridge Project. We have a consideration adopting an annual policy prescribing procedures for purchasing for the mayor and any member of the council. Consideration of approval of annual purchase orders for fiscal year 2018-19. Consideration of renewable, of the agreement with Cholo Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 1819. And the renewal agreement with White Mountain Meals on Wheels for managing the Cholo Senior Center for the year 2018-19. And the renewal agreement with Cholo Historical Society for the fiscal year 1819. And the minutes of the regular meeting, June 5, 2018. Look for a motion.
No motion.
Have a motion by Councilmember Alsop, second by Councilmember Crittenden. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? See that that pass six to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is a new, A, New Business Public Hearing regarding the final project for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, proposed secondary property tax, Justin Johnson.
Can you load the PowerPoint now?
It's loaded.
Okay. Here we go. All right. So tonight we have our final budget presentation. Seems like we've done a few of them since January, but hopefully we've answered all the questions and addressed all the goals and objectives that the council has established and, and been informative and transparent in our process. The presentation tonight, you'll notice the budget number is the same as what we presented two weeks ago in the tentative budget. So we haven't changed any projects, any dollar amounts. Everything's the same as it was. A quick recap on the process. We start in January with council study session. We try to be transparent, have a couple of budget town halls for the public to come and attend. We work closely with department heads in the council to establish a realistic budget and try to meet all the goals and objectives we can within our, the constraints of the dollars that we do have. And then tonight, we're here for the final budget adoption and a public hearing. And then on July 17, we'll wrap everything up with our secondary, adopting our secondary tax rate for the Street Light Improvement District. This is a reminder of the goals and priorities of the council, to preserve and maintain infrastructure, improve quality of life, improve community and economic development, and enhance the organization throughout the city. This is our adopted budget over the last four or five years compared to what we've actually spent in the budget. The columns in the blue are the budgeted numbers. Columns in the red are the actual expenditures. So we've underspent the budget for the last five years and even longer than that. That's what we have for the council here tonight. And we would expect the same for our fiscal year 19 budget. This is a breakdown of the revenues coming in. Most of those revenues coming in through operations, but we also have a significant portion that are, that is beginning fund balance from project carryovers and other items that have not been spent in prior years. From the operating revenues, this further breaks down where those operating revenues come from. Local taxes and the state shared revenues or state shared taxes are large components. We also have charges for services and utility fees, and then intragovernmental revenues. This is a breakdown of expenditures by type, how we spend our money within the budget as a whole. And 35% of that goes to capital, infrastructure improvements, equipment, things that are required to run the city, and 30.9% on personnel, and 20% on operations. This is a breakdown of how we spend the money within the general fund for public safety with the police department. We're at 36%. The airport's at 20, community services at 13, and then a lot of other little pieces to go along with that. This is a breakdown of our personnel. We have 161 full-time equivalents, and this gives you an idea of where the personnel or the numbers of employees we have in each department. This is a breakdown of our, our capital, which feels very critical for the budget. The largest components within streets, airport water and wastewater. We have a lot of projects going on. Probably most notably is the work we're going to be doing on the runway at the airport, which is about 3.7 million. And that'll start sometime in August. This is expenditures by service area. Public works and utilities make up large components there with public safety in at 21%. Community services at 11, and general government at 9%. That's what we have for tonight for the final budget adoption. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we have our secondary property tax levy scheduled for a public hearing on July 17. That's the presentation I have for tonight. Does the council have any questions for staff?
Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as looking at it on the very first screen, we, we started this thing along with you guys back in January, so six months working on this. So I want to thank you and Kerry for your time and effort for everything you've done for this, for this budget. And I know there's, we ask a lot as a council of moving things around and getting the things done. So we definitely want to thank you for everything you've done for that. So I'd like to make a motion if that's all right with you, Mayor.
Yeah, I've got to go into public hearings still.
I move to adopt resolution, oh, this is a public hearing?
No, I've got to, I got to open the meeting to public hearing first.
Okay.
Any other questions of him right now, though? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This time I'll open a public hearing regarding the final budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, and the proposed property tax levy consideration and revolution, R 2018-18, adopting the final budget for fiscal year ending June 30. Seeing nobody moved on public hearing, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to staff for a motion. Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number R 2018-18, adopting the final budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, in amount not to exceed $58,607,593.
We have a motion, second by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you. This time we need to recess into CFD facilities meeting, and we'll get just a minute here for our clerk to, and just change our devices here real quick. This time I'd like to call a special meeting of the Cholo Community Facilities District to order by roll call. See that all board members are present with the exception of Board Member Kukavas, who's excused this night. We have a public hearing, Resolution R 218-02, adopting the final budget and setting the tax levy of the fiscal year ending. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up public hearing for that if there's anybody in the public has any comments. Okay? Seeing nobody's moved, I'll close the public hearing on that and bring it back to Justin Johnson for a review of this budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. We have a presentation tonight similar to the presentation we presented a couple of weeks ago to go through the status of the CFD and where we're at with the budget. So our budget number for fiscal year 19 is 850,145. We'll get into the details of that. As a reminder, the CFD is a special, special district that was formed by the residents of the district in 2005. It is a separate unit of government, separate from the city of Cholo. The debt issued is covered by the district's assessed value. The benefit of any debt that's issued has to be for the district itself, and it's typically taken in the form of infrastructure improvements. There was a total of $2.9 million issued, and the, the assessment portion of this debt will pay off in 2032. The assessed valuations have improved the last two years with the recession and the decline of the economy in general. In 2008, 2009, we saw significant decreases in the assessed valuations. There were a number of years where it was double-digit decreases, but in 2017, it started to turn back and increased by 2.1%. And for fiscal year 2018, it increased by 17.4%. So we hope that this trend will continue of improved valuations. There are two separate funds in the CFD. You have the special assessments, and then you have the general obligation bonds. First, we'll talk about the assessment bond, which was issued in 2007 for $2 million. There's an annual debt service of 153,000, approximately 227 parcels, and the developer owns 56% of those parcels. And we currently have a reserve in that account of $230,000. On the revenue side, our beginning fund balance was 269,000. We do have an assessment billing that we send out twice per year, in June, principal and interest, and in December, interest only. The total of those billings is about $650.
Say that again. That didn't make sense. It says 133,000.
Can you go back one slide, Ann?
Yes.
That's the debt service.
Okay.
So that's what that assessment is, is due to pay each year.
Any other questions?
On the general obligation side, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, but the, the general obligation bond is set to be paid off in July of 2018, which means the tax levy that's currently assessed to the property owners up there will go away. So we'll no longer assess that tax levy, and we'll no, no longer collect for maintenance and operations because the GO bond will be going away. When we last met, we were still working with the developer to finalize the details, but from the district's perspective, the money has been wired to the, to the financing agency, Wells Fargo, and they have to hold that money for 30 days and do some publications. And at, at the end of that 30-day period, then it'll be paid off. Any questions on the general obligation side?
I mean, that's, that's a huge thing for, you know, the community that lives up there, the people that are potentially looking at buying. You know, that's a separate tax that those homeowners were having to pay. And with that going away by, for, by the developer doing that, I think that's a, a huge positive impact for that community up there as, as well as for the city of Cholo.
Yeah, the developer really stepped up, and they paid off all of those early, which is something they certainly didn't have to do, but they're hoping that'll spur some growth and maybe shed a positive light up there because of the negativity of having the additional tax levy. That is gone now, so now they'll just have their assessments, and they won't see anything on their property tax bill. So definitely a big, a good move, in our opinion, for the developer to do that. Hopefully, the homeowners and property owners up there realize that that's not something they had to do, so they should be.
And as they do this, in this reserve that we have held, that will, that fund balance will be balanced out to zero and will go away as well?
Yeah, there'll be a little bit left over once the transaction's completed, but that will transfer to the assessment.
Councilman, Board Member Kelly.
Yeah. I'm just going way back and trying to remember some things, and there were some roadblocks to them paying this off early. Did they have to pre, pay the interest for the entire term, or?
No, the bonds were, became callable, which allowed them to do the payoff early. I think that was in '16 when they became callable, which means they can pay them without.
Early on, they couldn't do this.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's what I had remembered, so I'm glad that that changed. And if I'm understanding you and just repeating what you're saying, of the two types of improvements out there, one of them is going to be zeroed, and the current property owners out there won't have to face that anymore.
That's correct.
And the other one is more, shall I say, traditional, likened to what we saw happen in Torreon and other places around the city. And they will go on, but they will pay off, do you know when?
2032.
2032, those will come to an end, but they were the lesser of the two. Am I remembering that right? Are they about the same?
I think the dollar amount was more for the assessment than for the GO. It was more. The one that's continuing is more.
But we will, we will say that the, on the general obligation bonds, each property owner with a house up there was paying between $400 and $750 a year extra taxes.
And that going away?
That's going away.
Yeah.
And just to know, Cholo Bluff put in approximately $400,000 extra of that money to make that happen.
I think it was smart of them. I really do. Good move. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I had it straight and maybe restated it for the people that might be watching out there. They should be throwing a party.
They should.
That's all I have for the board tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time I'll look for a motion. Board Member Alsop.
Thank you, Chairman. I move to adopt resolution number R 2018-02, adopting the final budget in the amount of $850,145.
We have a motion, they're second. Second by Board Member Kelly. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero.
All right.
Thank you. Next item is, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on June 5, 2018.
No move.
A motion by Board Member Leach, second by Board Member Alsop. All in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Seeing no other business, I'll close the, the meeting of the CFD and wait a minute to come back into our regular council meeting here. back into our regular council meeting here. Okay, we'll resume our regular council meeting here. Next item is summary of current events. Any council member wishing to make a statement or share any current event may do so at this time. Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. Attended a board meeting for Meals on Wheels this last week. Just to go over some of the stuff, it was already mentioned tonight about a new webpage, whitemountainmealsonwheels.com/501c. Please go look at that and take a look at it. It's a really nice place, and they have a lot of local people on there, and it gives you a lot of different things that's going on in the senior center and I saw at Meals on Wheels. We got a thing coming up here, and I don't know if they can focus in on that, but it's a music festival Saturday, the 25th, at Cholo High School Auditorium. The headliner is Big Band, and there goes, Cholo High School kids will be doing some stuff there, and then also the Barbershop Quartet, and that's August 25th, and it's $10 at the door, and it starts at 3 o'clock. If you'd like to come and listen to that and help us out, that would be great. The next thing is there's a craft fair July 27th and 28th. It's a Friday/Saturday from 9 to 2 at the senior center, and they'll be hosting all kinds of craft and stuff out there, so you can look at it and hopefully purchase quite a few of it. Just want to let you know that we just signed a new contract for the fiscal year of 2019 for NACOG for Meals on Wheels, so we buy all their information, and we've got NACOG to help support us for the next year at the Meals on Wheels and Senior Center. If you have any other questions, please come by and see us at their Meals on Wheels and have a lunch, like was said earlier today. And then also, they're always looking for somebody to drive the truck or a car for them and deliver the food, so if you like doing that, just give them a thumbprint, and we'll get you on the road.
Thank you.
Next is, I also went to attend a meeting for Main Street. Just to let you know that the Wayfinder signs that are posted around town, we don't have any signs on them yet, but the posts are there. They're getting finalized with some weights to keep everything where they're not flopping in the breeze, so it's a lot easier to see. The Farmer's Market and Art Walk, it's on every Saturday right now until the end of September, is doing great. It's full, and if you've been out there, you've had a great time. If you haven't, you need to get out there and take a look at it. The next thing on that coming up, September 1, is the Battle of the Bands and Vans. September 1 at Frontier Park Saturday from 3 to 10 p.m. They're going to have competition for vans and bands and food vans, and so there's all kinds of stuff that's going to be happening on that date. If you're interested in going to that, make sure September 1 is on your calendar. And that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, I would tag on to that report. Not that it's my bailiwick, but if I understand the advertisements on the radio, your donation to Meals on Wheels qualifies for the state income tax credit? That's correct, right? I'm hearing that right? Now, folks, what that means in plain English is it's not a deduction like 501(c)(3)'s normally are. It's a credit. So there are limits to how much you can give and get that credit, but it's up to certain limits. It's dollar-for-dollar credit, and you can help a very worthy cause that's seeing to it that many of our seniors that don't have otherwise nourishing meals going to them every day get this. So that's on my heart. The city of Cholo actually kicks in to that cause, and I know you know that as I'm looking at the director. And thank you so much for your commitment and your time that you put in and the rest of the board. I thank you.
I did forget one thing, Mayor. Cholo Little League All-Star starts here in Cholo July 2, and there's going to be teams coming from all over the place, so that first week of July, there's going to be a lot of baseball playing up here at the Little League Field.
Great. Any other reports? Thank you. I just want to encourage everybody to get out and participate in the 4th of July. We won't be having a meeting the first week in July, so, you know, we have some great festivities. Our parade will be on the 4th. We will see about fireworks, and that's still up in the air. Get it? But at the same time, we will see what we're going to do. On a serious note tonight, we'd just like to wish our condolences to Connie Kokavas and her family. Connie's mother, Pearl Owens, passed away, and extend a heartfelt wish to her and her family and to the Owens family, the survivors of that. But Connie served us faithfully, and that's why she is not here this evening. There will be a graveside service at 10 a.m. on Monday at the Cholo Cemetery. The funeral services will be held in Utah this Saturday. So again, our condolences to Councilwoman Kokavas. At this time, I'll turn the time to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things to report happening at the library. The library's hosting a NASA event for the entire family called Music and Sounds of Space this Friday, June 23rd, from 6:15 to 8 p.m. And then the annual summer reading program opened all ages has begun, and participants can still sign up. And for information on these events and other library events, you can call 532-4070. The city staff is helping hatch Toyota with its annual fishing derby this Saturday, June 23rd, at Fools Hollow Lake. Registration begins at 6 a.m. with the fishing competition free for ages, kids up to 16 years old, from 7 to 11 a.m. Another event this Saturday will be the annual fly-in pancake breakfast at the airport from 7 a.m. to 10 a.m. There'll be classic and new aircraft on display, as well as a military flyover planned for 10 a.m. On the construction notes, ADOT is doing, will be doing a final paving section on the US 60 widening project near Penrod Road and US 60 east of Penrod. The drivers in that area should expect delays on Thursday, June 21st, Friday, June 22nd, and from Wednesday, June 27th through Friday, June 29th. US 60 east of State Route 77 from Adams Road to Fortieth Street will be restricted to one lane in each direction during daylight hours. And then next Monday and Tuesday, June 25th and 26th, the intersection of US 60 and State Route 77 will be closed overnight for final paving from 8 p.m. to 4 a.m. And hopefully, they can stay with that schedule, but we'll keep updating on our website should receive new information from ADOT. Slurry ceiling on our city streets should be completed in the next few days. The waterline replacement on West McNeil should be done by the end of next week, and road paving is a final phase planned for Saturday, June 30th. Fourth of July festivities will begin next Friday, June 29th, with the Deuces Wild Rodeo at Village Arena on White Mountain Road. Kids events start at 3 p.m., and the rodeo follows at 7 p.m. Wednesday, July 4th, our annual parade will be at 9 a.m. on the Deuce Clubs. The parade registration's closed next Monday, June 25th, although you can still submit an entry after that date until June 29th with a late fee. Immediately after the parade is a free wet zone at Frontier Fields at 600 North 9 Place. And then at 3 p.m., the gates open at Cholo Football Stadium at 500 West Old Linden Road for a day-long Freedom Fest with music, food vendors, and kids' activities. And as the mayor mentioned, we're still planning fireworks show, but check our website in case of last-minute cancellations, depending on conditions and availability of our firefighters. Fire restrictions still remain in effect for Navajo and Apache counties despite the recent moisture. It wasn't enough to have much effect on the dry conditions. It went down for a while, but it's headed back up the conditions. Stage 3 fire restrictions means no fires and no smoking in outdoor areas, only in vehicles and inside your houses can you smoke. And detailed information about stage 3 is available on our website. And finally, this is the final council meeting of the fiscal year. We wish everyone a happy 4th of July, and our next council meeting will be July 17th at 7 p.m. Thank you.
Any scheduled meetings need to be brought up? All right. We do have, we need a motion to move into executive session where we will discuss purchase, sale, lease of real property, AP dot number 210-49120. Have a motion, they're seconded. Seconded by Councilmember Alsop. All in favor? Any opposed? See that pass. This time, we will recess into executive session. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.